Go ahead, Madam Sheer.
Good evening and welcome to the school committee meeting of Monday, March 22 at 6:30 PM. I'm going to start with a new piece that we need to do while we're on Zoom for an open meeting law, and I need to name all the people that are participating with us. So I'm Jill Maroney. We have Ms. Emily Davidson, Mr. Tom Mills, Ms. Jamie Hennessy, Mr. Dan Biggins, Dr. Cron, Ms. Berlizzi, Mrs. Hackett, Mrs. Lamb, Mrs. Norris, Ms. Bond, Mrs. Shipper, Ms. Cook Crook, I'm sorry, Mr. Popatic, and Chris is with us from WRPS. Now we'll move on to, did I miss anyone? No. Now we'll move on to the acceptance of the minutes for the school committee meeting of Monday, March 8.
Motion to accept the may minutes.
Second. Those in favor, and I'll go for a roll call. Mr. Mills?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Biggins?
Aye, yes.
And Mrs. Hennessy?
Yes, as well.
Okay, and I'm a yes, that's all of us. Nothing under correspondence or audience, so we'll move on to Dr. Cron with the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. Well, reopening planning is well underway and completed for our K to 4 return on April 5. We are, the only things that are outstanding are when exactly our tents will be delivered for outdoor food service. We are reorganized our transportation and adjusted our starting times. I'd like to thank Father Hickey and the Holy Family Church for their donation of desks, which was very helpful to us at the elementary. So again, thank you to Father Hickey and Holy Family for being such great neighbors. They're always very gracious and willing to help. And then we are preparing for our grades 5 to 12 to return on April 26. Some planning is underway for the summer. We are beginning to think about what type of summer programs we'd like to offer, and just some ideas that we are currently working on is a three-week enrichment program at the elementary level, particularly K to 4, our 1 to 4, students entering grade 1 through 4. And we are looking at theme-based fun enrichment programs for the week. We're thinking maybe Waterworld would be one week, maybe Steam would be another, maybe Animal Kingdom would be another, but we're thinking to make this super fun. We want the kids to be engaged, to work on their DLA and math skills, but to do so in a fun atmosphere. We want to, we want to work carefully with students on their social emotional skills. So anything that we can get done over the summer will make things even better in the fall. So we are working hard at some planning. Now, all of that planning is contingent upon funding, but we are waiting anxiously to hear what the federal government's stimulus package is going to bring to us, but we are fairly certain it should be a substantial amount of money and hopefully would be enough to fund a robust summer program for our students. We also are planning a program at the middle school and the high school, a summer school program. I'd also like to remind everyone at this time that I know it feels like that things are better, and they are better, and people are beginning to get vaccinated, and that's great. But as we prepare to bring back all students into the schools, it's more important now than ever that we continue to wear our masks, that we continue to socially distance, that we continue to wash our hands and be vigilant, and that we're vigilant outside of school, that faculty and staff are careful during planning periods and lunches, and try to socially distance where possible. We are about to restart with a greater concentration of people in our buildings, and that means if there is a case, that there are greater numbers of close contacts. We need to be even more careful. So I just want to remind every one of that. I know we're all tired of this thing. We'd like it to be gone, but it's not. So I just ask that we remain particularly vigilant as we reopen schools. And I do have an announcement that I will save for the personnel section of our, of our meeting, and I also will discuss budget, but that will be under new business, I believe. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Cron. Do you happen to know the start times for when we reopen fully? Or, Ms. Berlizzi, do you know? That is one question that I keep getting.
Which school?
I think if we know them all, I was going to ask you to say them all, but if you don't, then maybe we can send out just an email with that information. Did they change?
It's been published. We're happy to publish it again. I don't have it right in front of me. I don't know if you do.
Okay.
Don't have it in front of me, no, but I'll get it to you tomorrow.
Okay, sorry. I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
Well, that's okay. It's all right.
Under reports, we have financial reports for February, school department, high school student activities, middle school student activities, the cafeteria, and the daycare. Do we have any questions on the reports?
Yeah. Motion to accept.
Five seconds. Thank you. I'm going to roll call. Mr. Mills?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Biggins? You're on mute.
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Hennessy?
Yes, as well.
Thank you. Moving on to monthly reports for January and February, we have art, athletic, computer technology, Dean, English 9 through 12, health, physical education, math, 9 through 12, music, radio, TV station, science, social studies, special education, the middle school with Mrs. Shipper, and the middle school with Mr. Griffin, foreign language, and the library.
16 motions to accept.
16 seconds.
Thank you. Roll call again. Mr. Mills?
Yes.
Mr. Biggins?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hennessy?
16 yeses.
I'm a yes as well, and we all stayed on mute, so we did right through that. Thank you. On to curriculum corner with the Rogers Middle School music students. We have Mrs. Bond, and we have Mrs. Crook, Mr. Piazza, and Mr. Popatic.
So.
Daryl Shipper's here too.
Can I start, Jill?
Yep, go ahead.
Let me just introduce Ms. Crook and Mr. Popatic, our two music teachers this year. We all know amazing things have been happening in every building all the time, but I really wanted to recognize these kids in this program because a year ago at this time, last March, we were about to do our curriculum corner, and so now here we are a year later, putting it up in front of everybody. We have been doing amazing stuff with our kids and music. So Emma Wood is here, and Cameron McGuire is here, and hopefully Corinne Medford is going to jump in as well. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Crook for our presentation.
Great. I will, I won't talk too much. I know Emma has some things prepared. Hopefully Corinne will, will get in, in time, but I'm going to share my screen and we'll get going. Of course, now I'm a Google Meet person, so this is something new to me. Um, there we go. Here I am. Okay, so the two projects, we are, I guess I should check, the classic teacher line. Can everyone see my slides?
Yes.
Okay, so the two projects we're going to present today are, well, I guess I won't present Corinne's unless she's here, but I'll, I can explain it a little bit. So Emma is going to talk about her composition that we did on Note Flight. Note Flight is an online music notation software. Just a quick overview of it. It's web-based, so it works well with their Chromebooks. It's free to the students and the district, which is a lovely thing. Relatively simple when we compare it to other notation softwares that, that are used when composing music, like Finale and Sibelius, other things that you have to pay for, download to the computers. This one is purely web-based, so it's very simple for the kids to just create an account, log right in, and get going. We tied this project into a notation unit, talking about note names, durations, you know, whole notes, half notes, quarter notes, everything like this. We do the music alphabet. We talk about how there's only A through G. We don't have an H through Z. It stops there. And from there, we do, so it's kind of a challenge. We see how many words they can make using those seven letters, and they can get very into it. It's, it can get, the competition can get a little heated, so it's fun for them sometimes. The poem setting project, I'm going to let Emma talk, so I guess I'll keep my screen up. But Emma, you can, you can explain your project a little bit, and then when you're finished, I'll show, I'll show your presentation. So go ahead.
During music class, we studied the poem by Robert Frost, "Dust Snow," in Mr. Hegarty's English class. We used online notation program Note Flight to create our melodies to accompany the poem.
Awesome. So just to reiterate, she and her classmates, they took the, they started by taking the poem and creating the rhythm that goes through it. So we did a lot of clapping. We say, let me pull it up before I just try to say it from memory. V, way, A, pro, right? So we clap. We do each syllable. We first counted the syllables. They went through. So Emma did this. She, we started by doing the lyrics and the rhythm. So she went through. She put all the same note, using just the rhythm, and the kids decided they had their own, they made their own melodies, but the rhythm started at the same. So they're all starting with the same baseline here, and then they progressed it however they, they saw fit. So this was Emma's, and then I will show you her final product here. I'm going to try to get two screens going here so I can play and show you at the same time. So we had a melody. The top line was the melody. You'll notice the rhythm, and the words are still there, but she just moved the notes up and down to create a melody. She added a baseline where we use whole notes to just have a more sustained part underneath, and then she added a percussion part at the bottom. So I will play that and share her work with you now. Hopefully. I'll open the MP3 one more time. That's why we have backup links.
All right. I understand, Mr. Biggins was trying to sing the melody.
You don't want to hear me sing.
Yeah, you're right.
So that is Emma's project. Thank you, Emma, for, for talking a little bit about it and sharing that with us. We really appreciate it. Stops.
That's, it looks good.
Yeah, great job, Emma.
Great job, Emma.
Super.
It doesn't look easy, Emma. Good job.
Emma, who was, who was playing the drums with you? No.
So they had the, the Note Flight, I, I don't want to take too much time, but they, you can, you click and drag just notes. You put them right in, and it's the different, different types of drums, so.
Oh, okay.
She thought it was playing her own drum part there.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Very cool.
Yeah.
Emma, are you loving music?
Yes.
You love having that in school?
Yeah.
Yeah. My kids do too. They love it. I love, now that they're home in remote, that I get to hear Erin in her music class each day, in the whole class. So it's like a little concert in the day for us. Does anyone have any other questions or comments to Emma and Mrs. Crook?
No, that looks really good. Thank you.
Just great job. Music is, music is a great, great hobby, and sometimes even profession and career to, to, to follow. So keep up the good work, and it's a lot of fun, too. Great job.
Thank you.
Good job.
Good job, Emma. So Ms. Crook, I guess I'll take over, and we'll hope that your other student maybe pops in, but, all right, so I'll share my screen. Very similar to a little different project, but get my screen shared here. There we go. All right, so we, and Cameron, who's joining us, Cam's class, we did another different composition project where they had to make their very own original composition. But in our process of learning about notation, we studied a very famous melody. So we took a masterwork by Beethoven. So we used Note Flight, this, the music notation software, and we learned a little bit about Beethoven along the way, and really studied what Beethoven did with his melody to "Ode to Joy," one of the most famous melodies ever written. So we, we examined how actually simple the melody is. It doesn't take a lot of complexity to make a great melody. So we kind of looked at that, and I'm going to have Cam maybe help explain a couple of things that we might have learned. Now, this screen that you see here is the, we started off learning about quarter notes and the musical alphabet, and then to learn our way around Note Flight, I had them notate Beethoven's melody. And this is actually a screen, I'm not sure this is Cam's work, but this was another student in the class. They all pretty much looked the same, so I just grabbed one, but this has notated the melody in the treble clef, and we added a little bass line to sort of give us a little foundation for where we could go in our own compositions. So Cam, maybe you can help identify some of the things that we talked about that make this a really interesting melody. And I'm going to start to kind of circle some of them with my cursor that hopefully everybody can see. Maybe that'll give you some clues there, Cam, too. But maybe you can chime in on a few things that, that make this melody really, really neat.
Repeating notes make.
Yeah. So we have lots of repeated notes in this first line right here. Here's another set. Here's another set, another set, and another set. Good, Cam. What else?
Also, like, um, simple rhythms and eight, eight measure phases.
Yes, right. So we have simple rhythms. This, if you, if, if everyone notices, the first three measures here are all just simply quarter notes, and we have the same rhythm down below, and very little alteration in the, in the rhythm at the end as well. And then, Cam, right, we talked about that this melody is eight bars or measures long, which is a pretty standard thing for melodies. So we, we talked about making our own melodies in some kind of unit of eight measures, and that's going to be really effective. Seven measure phrases, not very, they're kind of awkward. All right. Anything else that you noticed in there, Cam? What if I, Cam, what if I circle these first three measures? Do we see those again somewhere?
Yes.
Where do we see them again?
Um, right below.
Yeah, right below. So Beethoven wrote three measures of a beautiful melody, and he said, hey, this is great. I'm going to do it again. And he did it again. So we talked about how Beethoven uses repeated, repeating patterns a lot. We even also did a brief survey of his Fifth Symphony, the famous bum, 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 bum. And Cam, what did he do with those four notes?
He just kept like repeating them and make them like, um.
Yeah.
Um, like, what's the word called?
Uh, he composed the whole movement with that, right? Pretty much used that idea to do the whole eight minutes of a movement, which is pretty remarkable. So we talked about that as we went to do our compositions. So thanks, Cam. So that's what we learned from Beethoven. And then we said, all right, I, I gave the students very little criteria. The only teacher provided criteria I gave them, so that their piece would be in the right key, was I asked them to please start on one of these three notes. They could choose one of those three notes, that their final note should be the, the note C, so that we could be in a key that will sound really great. And then the strategies, we just used the same ones that Cam mentioned, repeated notes, stepwise motion, eight measure phrases, simple rhythms. And I want to share with you what Cam was able to create, and then just point out a couple of other things. And maybe Cam could even chime in on some of the things that he did. But this, now, Cam, this might look slightly different. I just altered it to fit on the screen a little bit better, but this is exactly your work. This is what Cam did. So he started with a melody in the top line, and he stuck to really simple rhythms. He started on a C. He ended on a C. Cam, then, what I really like, a couple of things that I really selected Cam's work for is, he actually mimicked a lot of the bass line that we had in the Beethoven music, and he jazzed up the rhythms a little bit. He altered a few notes here and there. And then Cam got really enterprising and even added a second, another part in the trumpet, which is really interesting with what's there. And then he also added a drum part. Cam, I'm wondering if there's anything that you want to point out that you, you thought about in here?
Um, I thought that, um, my work was like, very like, um, I can't, I can't forget the words. It's like, um, I can't think.
That's all right.
Yeah.
I'm putting you on the spot. A couple of things that are really neat, that I know when I was walking around with the class, helping the class out in, in certain areas, Cam, when he would do his playback, one of the powerful things about Note Flight is, you can play it back so that the students can compose, and then how does it sound? And that's what I challenged him to do. Listen to it. Do you like the way it sounds? They were able to easily change notes. But Cam added this trumpet part, and when he was playing it back, he made the comment to me, the trumpet's too loud. So Cam was able to go in in Note Flight and add some expressive markings, too, which was a little bit more advanced than what we were looking for. But he, he had, he had the piano part. We bumped it up to forte, which is loud, and then he made the trumpet piano, which is soft. So, and then as soon as he did that, he really liked the balance. So he was able to start adding some expressive markings in there as well. And he really took this, this a long way. So I'm going to attempt to play this. This is actually in Note Flight right now. This hopefully, just play it for us here. See here if I can get this to work. I think I just need to get out of display mode so I can get into it a little bit better here. Actually, you know what I am going to do? Yeah, let me just go to my Note Flight. Here we go. And we'll get it, get a world premiere. How about that, Cam? World premiere on Zoom. All right, here we go. So here's Cam's piece called Rainfall. All right, here we go. All right, there it is. So that is Cam's piece. Cam, bravo.
Thank you.
Very good job, Cam.
Very good.
All right.
Standing.
Anybody has any questions for Cam?
Cam, did you, doing that, did you enjoy that work?
Yes, I did.
It's pretty neat that you can actually create something, isn't it? It's something that no one else made before. You designed, you were the only one that wrote that tune in the world. That's uniquely yours, and isn't that pretty kind of neat?
Yeah.
Good job. I know we're all proud of you.
Thank you.
Hey, Cam, there was a little F and a little P. Who were those for?
So I did the F for the piano to make it louder, and then I did the P to make the trumpet, um, softer, so I could level out like the volume of each instrument.
All right, that sounds good.
Any other questions for Cam?
No, just great job, Cam.
Great job.
Sound.
Great job. I love the name of your piece, Rainfall.
That was Note Flight, huh?
Called Note Flight, yep.
Very interesting. Excellent job, Cam. Good job.
He muted. He's done talking.
Oh, oh, he muted, I see. He's bumbling. He says, what am I getting at here?
The students are very great at that. They, they get on their meets, they get on mute, and they're, 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 uh, they've been drilled well on that.
Well, they know, right, to go back and mute so that they're quiet. So that's what he was doing. Thank you, Cam. Awesome job. Very impressive.
Thank you.
And that's all that you guys have? I didn't see your other.
No, Corinne did.
Come in. Okay. Sorry that she's missing it.
Yeah.
Really, really nice project. I, I'll just, less than 30 seconds, I'll just quickly tell you. There's another program called Soundation. So I don't know, you've probably seen it. If you guys have iPhones or any sort of Apple product, GarageBand, it's the orange guitar, although it's always updating, so it might not be that anymore. But GarageBand is strictly Mac for like Apple products and computers like that. So when we have, when it's like normal times, we can put, you know, three kids on one computer, and they can do a project on GarageBand together, and they love it. Obviously, now, we can't do that. But with the Chromebooks, we were able to find another free, we love free programs, called Soundation. And it's very similar, same, like you put things in audio loops, and you drag them in, and they look, they listen through the sounds, and they drag them in and see what fits nicely together. So we did a project with the eighth graders. Mr. Popatic and I both did these projects. We called them like theme projects. We tried to keep it simple. There are starter kits, so the kids look through and they say, okay, there's a hip hop starter kit here. I'm going to do a hip hop theme. And they love that because that's the kind of music they're listening to anyway, but you know, hip hop, all those. So they click, they, they look through, and rather than looking through, you know, 10,000 sound loops, they're able to zone in and say, okay, I'm going to click this starter kit, and I'm going to listen through, and they click them and drag them in. And it's, it's very funny because Corinne, actually, she plays clarinet in, in our band. So I know her as, you know, Corinne, the clarinet player. And she was making these like trap dubstep sounds. And I'm like, Corinne, I didn't even know this was something that you, you wanted to do. And she's like, yeah, this is really cool. So I wish she was here to show you those. But she made a really cool, she called it her dream theme, and it was like very, if this was a word, this is what I'm trying to say, you know, so very like, I'm like, I'm fumbling like over my words, like.
Ethereal?
Ethereal, that's a nice, that's a nice word. Okay, yeah. So she made a beautiful theme, and she just, she and many of her classmates were really doing great work. So Soundation is another program that we've been using. It's really nice that they have the Chromebooks. It's so, we're finding, and it's fun for, Mr. Pop, I can speak for him on this. It's fun for us to find new projects to do because, you know, we, we get settled in our ways. We always do, and we have the same group of projects, and it, you can tweak them and make them different, make it fun and exciting for the kids. But finding these new websites and these new programs to use are great. And it's nice that they all have the Chromebooks, and they can get right to it, and they enjoy it, too. It's, it's, it's fun. It's fun for us to watch, so. Yeah.
I can attest, this is Jamie. Hi, Mr. Miss Crook. My daughter's in eighth grade, and she had the foundations, and it was great to see the creativity that they all come up with, right? Everyone is so unique and generates their own version of a project. And, you know, I was calling her DJ Jilly for a little while, because I was like, maybe this is a profession for you, like getting exposure to this at such a young age. I, kudos to both of you for continuing to provide that enrichment and come up with new, unique ways to engage the kids. She loved her music UA, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Anyone else? No. All right. Thank you both so much for coming. Thank you, Ms. Bond, too, for coming in tonight with us. We appreciate it.
Thanks for inviting us.
Good job.
Thank you.
You don't have to stay on. You certainly go enjoy your night. Thank you so much. We'll move on to old business, but completed fundraisers. We have a few tonight. Memorial Park PAC did Bulldog Masks. They made $190. And the Memorial Park PAC also had Name That Circle for $350. Memorial Park PAC, Jefferson, Esten, and Rogers Middle School PACs did the Bulldog Project. They raised $3,640, which was $910 per pack.
Good job.
The Memorial PAC, PAC did the Bulldog ornaments, but they lost $16 in that. And the Memorial Park PAC did Marshfield Holiday Lights, and they earned $83. So they have had a pretty productive year, even though we've been hybrid. So kudos to them. Good job. To all the PACs. We'll move on to the budget update, and that is with Dr. Cron.
Thank you very much. Jane, I'm going to ask you to share your screen and explain a few numbers.
Okay. Everybody see it?
Yes.
Okay, so just, just be quick. We had a very productive meeting on Friday with the Chair of the Board of Select and the Chair of. Okay, so uh, just just be quick. We had a very productive meeting on Friday with the Chair of the Board of Selectmen, the Chair of FinCom, Mr. Lapp and uh, and Biz, myself, um, and Jill and Dr. Kron. And what you'll see here is you'll see uh, three relative comment. This is where we were last year, three relative columns. This is where we were last week with a one point two million dollar deficit. This is where we are this week with a one hundred and ninety-five thousand dollar deficit. What's changed between now and then significantly is the town's contribution um, to the budget has gone up by four hundred and nine um, thousand dollars from what was uh, projected when we were in front of FinCom and last in front of you through today. Second, um, I have reevaluated the grants um, for the current year. And I am comfortable that once again, I'm going to be able to freeze and roll some grants from this year to next year. This year, um, I rolled about a hundred and well, about two hundred and ten. And this year, in addition to that, I'm hopeful to be able to roll approximately a hundred um, and sixty thousand. So our grant revenue is up. Circuit Breaker, which is our reimbursement for special education. This is the one I'm most nervous about, but I am, I I I do think it's accomplishable. Um, I'm increasing this by a hundred and fifty thousand. This is an exceptionally restricted account through the state and you're only allowed to carry um, a certain balance. So I cannot um, I cannot exceed um, that restriction. This will bump right up close to that restriction. Um, and that is fingers crossed um, with our speds cost holding stable for the next three months. And as Dr. Kron constantly reminds me, someone always moves in in April. So we're hopeful um, that that does not occur. And so I've increased Circuit Breaker um, here, my apologies, by a hundred and fifty thousand. This is a utilization of our revolving accounts. And here I took the four hundred and thirty-four thousand that I was applying for rolling over. And rather than applying it to the deficit, I've included it as revenue and I've rolled it up by another sixty-four thousand dollars for a five hundred thousand dollar increase in utilization of our revolving accounts from where we were at FinCom to here, right? Really, that's only, that's really only a sixty-six thousand dollar increase from then to there. It's just where I presented it. So that increases our revenue um, from FinCom from the twenty-eight seven to the twenty-nine nine of approximately one point two um, million dollars, which is obviously tremendously significant. Um, then we get down to our the expenses of the budget. I have reduced um, our salary line by several of the COVID positions um, that will not be needed next year. Um, just over a quarter of a million dollars. I have level funded um, and therefore decreased um, our extracurricular and coaches line from this year to next year for a net reduction in salaries of two hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. What that does is it reduces our deficit from the two point four million dollars to the nine hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. Then we continue to apply, which is again, something I don't want to do. Uh, none of us want to do is apply our seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of the S R two money to that deficit. Um, S R two is the second round of federal relief. Um, that is pretty much targeted to any COVID cost, uh, COVID expense or COVID, uh, most significantly COVID learning loss. All right, so um, but we are at this point in time using it to bring our nine hundred and forty-five thousand dollar deficit down to a far more manageable figure of one hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. What our hope is, um, both um, biz in mind, is that additional Chapter Seventy does in fact um, come into play. And we will um, be able to have a new town meeting um, in later in the spring, early in the summer, or similar to this year. Um, this fiscal year, actually in the fall, once the state budget process um, goes through. Uh, but what this does show is with us using the S R two um, funds, we are exceptionally close um, to a one hundred and ninety-five thousand dollar um, deficit, which I believe is manageable over the course of a given year. It's risky, of course, um, but I believe it is a manageable um, reasonable risk for us to take at this point in time. If the Chapter Seventy becomes available, we would hope um, that that would go through the seventy-thirty process. And the town, the schools would receive additional funding and then we can free the S R two money up um, to be more in line um, with its intent. So that's sort of it. Um, in a nutshell, a lot of activity, um, and a lot of work over um, the course of last couple of weeks. And uh, we're grateful um, for all the and thankful for all those involved.
We want to thank Doug and Biz uh, for their work over the past couple of weeks and their work in in helping find this additional funding for us. It makes a huge difference at this point in the budget process. So we want to thank them.
May I stop sharing?
Yes.
Someone has questions? Does anyone have questions before I stop sharing?
I have a quick question, Jane, while you have the screen up. So Saturday, one and two, they go down um, a significant amount, in my opinion. Is it uh, breakage or is it cuts or is it not hiring as many salary two staff?
Uh, salary two is the same staff with no increase. I went back and I confirmed that the six forty-eight was leveled from six from FY twenty-one, which is good. Uh, because the FY twenty-one, FY twenty was our our full, our last full extracurricular year. All right, so I'm com- I'm comfortable um, with this line. On this line, you always can, you're always concerned about the two hundred and sixty-eight thousand is a reduction in actual bodies and positions um, that are currently filled with um, COVID um, personnel.
Okay. But going into next year, it's not a cut of a, of a.
Well.
Well, it's technically a cut, but we we don't need those positions. It's not like.
That is correct.
You're firing.
That is correct.
Okay.
That is, we are eliminating.
Letting go of a math teacher.
We are eliminating fully remote teaching positions.
Got it.
Is what that represents.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else have any questions before check down? With Reggie?
Um, just to Connor. Um, I know that this budget uh, year and budget season has been more challenging than most recent. Um, given everything going on in our town, in our community, in our state, in our country, it's been difficult. I mean, COVID's put um, put us all at a a place of hardship and being behind the eight ball up until this point. And I know there was a lot of anxiety and a lot of um, difficulty that uh, our superintendent and our business manager Jane have been going through over the course of the last uh, several, several weeks. Uh, so thank you for getting through all that. And I I know I really appreciate our counterparts on the Board of Selectmen and on the Finance Committee, um, and Doug and Biz. It just shows what cooperation can do um, amongst volunteers and um, and the uh, good administration that we have in this town. So I'm glad that uh, so much progress has been made. Um, and hopefully incrementally over time, uh, we can look to build long term of a a really healthy, sustainable budget that will um, not only meet the towns and the kids' needs, but really put us on an upward trajectory of having us try to be really the best uh, school district around.
Amen.
Thanks, Dan. Any other comments? No. Okay. Thank you, Jane. I appreciate your hard work on that. And like Dan said, and everyone else too, with Biz and Doug as well, Dr. Kron and Michael Laughlin.
I I'd also, if you don't mind, I just sort of like, you don't uh, don't um, Donna Capless, Joan Walsh, uh, have really spent a tremendous amount of time with me um, over the course of the last two weeks um, on a lot of these um, moving parts um, on both the grant side, on the grant revolving in salary line. So um, I, we have a great team here, um, just like Town Hall does. So we're very lucky.
Thank you. I agree. Okay, we'll move on to request for approval of East Leap and Steps Parent Handbook, the second reading. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
No motion to approve?
Second. You want three? No, one.
I, it's one handbook, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
The one, please.
That's fine. One.
Okay. Um, we'll go roll call. Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Mills?
Yes.
Mr. Biggins?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hennessy?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Thank you. We'll move on to request for approval of the elementary schools' professional development days. And those are enclosed. Um.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we'll go the roll call for uh, Mr. Mills?
Uh, yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Do we have the actual dates?
That's.
June seventeenth and June eighteenth.
Uh, approved, yes.
Okay. I had it, Emily. I just had moved it over when I moved over the thing. And that's what I was trying to find. Sorry. So I had Mr. Mills and Mrs. Davidson, Mr. Biggins?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hennessy?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, uh, Madam Chair, I'm sorry. I forgot to ask. I need a vote on the budget.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I didn't ask for it. My apologies.
Nope, I didn't have it written down that you needed it. We've been just updating and updating.
Right, I haven't asked, but I think since the, and and just to circle back to it, sorry, I didn't conclude with what the process will be. Tomorrow evening, the Board of Selectmen will hopefully be voting this number. And then the following night, the FinCom will be voting this number.
Motion to approve the budget?
Can we just please itemize the total of the um, thirty million, eight hundred and sixty-five thousand, two hundred and forty-eight as the total budget? And the town's portion of the budget, twenty-six million, three hundred and thirty-eight thousand.
Motion to approve that was numbers.
Town of twenty-six million, three hundred and thirty-eight in a total budget of thirty million, eight hundred and sixty-five, two forty-eight.
Okay, motion, motion to approve those particular, those numbers that they were uh, read off.
Thank you. Is that good, Jane?
Yes, thank you. My apologies again.
Second.
Emily, say your second. So I'll roll call Mr. Mills?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Biggins?
Yes.
Mrs. Hennessy?
Yes.
I mean, yes, as well. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Okay.
And Jill, before we move on, I know we approved um, the two half days. And I didn't think to ask this. Um, it's not changing our end of the year school date, correct? It's not pushing out uh, any of, it's not adding a day or two to the calendar, correct? I didn't think so. I just wanted to put that on record in case parents see we're adding to or making two of the days half days, so.
Thank you. You're right.
And and Dr. Kron said yes, and he's shaking his head that we're not just, no changes to date. So um, I just wanted to put that out there because I think the next thing we have is the uh, calendar for next school year, so.
Right.
Wakeups count.
So, right, as long as they go in for the half day, which was already on the calendar, it counts as a day. If we made it a PD with no students in, then it would have changed the day.
After, thank you.
Okay, yep. Okay. Any other questions before we keep moving? I feel like I'm cutting people off. Okay. We'll go on to the two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two school calendar. It's a first reading. Do we have any questions or concerns?
Motion to table.
I just have a quick question.
Sure.
Um, it looks like almost every other week is a half day. There's one half day. Do you think that would be more beneficial if it's combined to one complete PD day with no students? Or is it better to have numerous half days throughout the school year?
After.
Yeah, the half days is proven to be a a better model for us. We use those for um, we also tie those into principals' meetings and departmental meetings that happen each month. So we, um, a PD session that then extends into an additional hour and a half on the school day. Um, so in answer to your question, yes, we have found that the half days is a better model for us. And um, and it also gives us the double benefit of backing into department meetings and principals' meetings.
Right. Plus they count as a full school day.
That's correct.
And I think this goes back to in what nineteen and twenty, nineteen, twenty, we had one half day and not two a month, right? I think we had one half day for PD. So it's not unusual that everyone should be used to the half day Thursdays.
Okay, thank you. And Dr. Kron, you found that Thursdays are more productive. That's why they're not on Fridays. I think that's the question that I always seem to get is why are they having them on Thursdays where parents, I think, would want them on a Friday? But the school itself prefers them on a Thursday. So in case that question comes up.
I guess teachers and kids back for the next day for any questions or stuff like that.
Right. Okay, so we had, did I have a motion to table?
Motion to table the uh, school calendar.
Okay. And Dan is seconding it. So I'll go roll call again. Mr. Mills?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Biggins?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hennessy?
Yes.
I'm a yes, so we'll table that. Thank you. Moving on to a request for approval for graduation procedures.
The same as it was in nineteen fifty-seven? Nothing.
And sixty-five and.
I'll be gone.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we'll go around. Mr. Mills?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Biggins?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hennessy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Thank you. And we'll go into request for approval of fundraisers. We have, all of the PACs are doing a Five Below sales. Um, and I believe it's this Friday night at Five Below. And the Rockland High School has student government for Mr. Rockland in April. The class of two thousand and twenty-three is selling Hilliards Chocolate Bars in April and May. And the class of two thousand and twenty-one is doing a GoFundMe through March through May. Do you have any questions? No? Entertaining.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
All the fundraisers.
Second.
Thank you. We all go around. Mr. Mills?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Biggins?
Yes.
And Miss Hennessy?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. Thank you all.
And I'm guessing the the GoFundMe will be shared on Facebook and other social media for a lot of the town to even be aware of, you know, a GoFundMe is a a little wider reach than some of the other fundraisers. So just asking maybe that we get that link if we uh, are able to share it and contribute to it.
Put it on W R P S to advertise it.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go to Personnel Information with Dr. Kron.
Thank you. I have two things. First of all, I'd like to congratulate Elizabeth Norris, who will be taking over for Donna Lamb when she retires. Um, we are very sad to see Donna Lamb retire, but we're happy for her. And Elizabeth has been a great addition to our office. And um, we're very happy for her and excited for her to take over um, for Donna Lamb. So congratulations, Liz. Um, I also have one other personnel announcement that is probably one of the most important decisions that I have made in my nine years here in Rockland. And that is who will be um, replacing Ms. Bond as principal of Rogers Middle School in the fall. Uh, we had in a search that began, it's pretty much a national search. We had candidates from all over the country. We narrowed it down to twenty-six people that we looked closely at. We had twenty-seven candidates. We decided to interview eight of those candidates. Um, we then did finalists interviews for four of those eight candidates. And we decided as a committee unanimously that uh, Ms. Cheryl Shipper will be the next principal of the Rogers Middle School. Cheryl holds a Bachelor of Science degree in physics from UMass Lowell, a Masters of Education from St. Joseph's College, and a Masters of Education in Organizational Management from Endicott College. She taught chemistry and physics in Springfield and Lynn before joining the Rockland Public Schools in nineteen ninety-eight. From nineteen ninety-eight to two thousand and ten, she was a physics and chemistry teacher at Rockland High School. From nineteen ninety-eight to two thousand and ten, she was a physics and chemistry teacher at Rockland High School. And from two thousand and five to two thousand and ten, she was also the dean of students at Rockland High School. In two thousand and ten, she moved to Rogers Middle School as an assistant principal. In addition to her qualifications as an excellent educator and Rockland, Rockland Bulldog. She is one of the kindest people that I have had the privilege of knowing. And I am very, very proud of her and pleased to announce her as the next principal of Rogers Middle School. Would you like to say anything?
I would love to, thank you, Dr. Cron, that's, that's something. Thank you so much for this appointment. Thank you to many of the people on the committee are here today, the Tennessee and Jane and Alan. It was quite a ride and it, it is, it's an honor. It's been a privilege to serve as the assistant principal of Rogers Middle School for the last ten years. And to work in the Rockland Public Schools since nineteen ninety-eight, which is twenty-three years. And I can't tell you how excited I am to move into this new role. I'm excited, I'm thrilled, I can't wait to see where we go, moving into the new era, out of this pandemic into, into the new era of Rogers Middle School. So I thank all of you for this opportunity and I promise I won't let you down. Thank you very much.
Good.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Does anyone have any comments?
Congratulations.
Mr. Biggins?
Yeah, I just want to say congratulations, I think this is awesome news for Rogers Middle School. Over the years of observing Mrs. Shipper work on the school committee, but more importantly, as a parent now with a child in the middle school. I'm really excited about this. It, it's, it's a good thing for us and I hope, I hope you're excited, it's good to have, it's good to have you still be here with us. And I, and I'm really excited about the future of Rogers Middle School here in Rockland.
Thanks, Dan. I agree that it could be the next era and we're excited to have you, so thank you and congratulations to you. Anyone else?
I'd just like to say congratulations and I would say welcome, but you've been around longer than I have been, so. Looking forward to it.
More than most.
Right, this is awesome, very exciting news. As Dan would say onward and upward, right? Okay, we're going to move on to our public service announcements. I'll start with Miss Hennessy, she's up in the top left of my screen.
I'm sure, so just wanted to touch base on the parent teacher conferences that happened last week in the middle school. I know elementary and high school are on different days, but I just wanted to give kudos to the entire admin team. And the teachers that had it run so well. And just thank the teachers for all their hard work that they share with us as parents. And to the parents that are listening, if you didn't get a chance, hopefully you can still connect with your teachers, the teachers of your child. Because they are there to support the continued learning and growth of, of your child in the school system. So I thought they went really well, so kudos to that. I know we talked a lot about upcoming fundraisers, but there are two that are going on and just reminders. The middle school is doing a calendar, April calendar raffle, as well as Aston doing, they're doing a calendar raffle as well. So if people are listening and you're not, don't have a child in one of those schools, reach out to someone that is there. They're five dollars for the calendar, I know I bought a bunch, so just sharing the wealth to drive those fundraisers. And a reminder, no school on Friday, the twenty-sixth. So I know my kids are excited about that as well. And then I think Dr. Cron said it, be vigilant and still be safe, everyone, that's all I have.
Thank you. And the, and the middle school pack did not have their Shamrock Classic this year. So Nancy Anderson had said they were really pressed for money, so it is great that you mentioned that, Jamie. We'll move to Mrs. Davidson.
I have nothing else for tonight.
Okay. Mr. Mills?
I'd like to thank everybody, you know, particularly if you go back and this, this has been a, a unique year, a difficult year. I'd like to thank all the, you know, the teachers and administrative staff, but I particularly like to thank the custodial staff for getting the schools ready and prepared for, you know, for what, what, what we're now doing. You know, that's a critical part of getting the schools open. And, and it just be careful, you know, wear your mask, do what you have to do, wash your hands and treat each other kind. So everybody have a good evening.
Thank you. Mr. Biggins?
Yeah, a couple of things, I agree with Mr. Mills absolutely, I mean, it's been an absolutely crazy year. And the entire staff of Rockland High School and student body has absolutely stepped up all year. Custodial staffs, teachers, paraprofessionals, cafeteria staff is one that I think deserves a huge. Not only have they been showing up for work every day, making sure that our kids are fed, but even when they were home, there's been remote areas to make sure that kids could get lunches throughout this pandemic. Just really a great, great effort by everyone all throughout. But what I really wanted to say too is a big congratulations to the Rockland High School football team. Football is back, baby, and back in a big way. Just want to say Coach LaCoury's team looks like they are really in mid-season form. They had a really great game against Abington that they pulled out seventeen fourteen. Abington's had a really great team over the years and has a, has had a pretty extended win streak if I'm, if I'm correct. And our Bulldogs broke that right up with a four interception night. So congratulations, Coach LaCoury, and good job, boys, and keep it up hopefully for a exciting spring the rest of the way. That's all I got.
And it was a nice write-up in the, in the, in the letter today on that.
They deserve it.
Yep, good job.
And thank you, Mr. Biggins. And I have, I had the privilege of on Friday, joining Mrs. Babcock's class. They invited me to join her class remotely, they are a full remote academy class. And these students obviously have not been to school at all this year. Mrs. Babcock invited me to be their first ever remote class visitor. So I think she is going to have someone come join them each Friday. I wanted to read their names, so we, I was blessed to meet Logan, Clara, Philip, Sky, Toby, Maya, Kaylee, Elijah, Landon, Trinity, Nick, Alex, Rose and Leo. And so we started with them asking me questions and trying to figure out who I was. And they figured out, they really did guess that I was on the school committee. They asked me, you know, questions of what we do here on the school committee. And I asked them questions on what was positive about being remote and what they liked about it. Did they miss being in class, like in person in class? They liked, they thought it was positive because they got to stay home and be comfortable. They didn't have to be on the bus at six A M. to get to us. It was funny to see how well adjusted they were, very comfortable in where they were, very content. And they worked like a team together. If one of them was having trouble or they were still on mute like we are all doing here tonight, they were helping each other, they were definitely a team. I did ask them, Dr. Cron, I said that I could come back to you and if I had to go sit in your office and ask a question of Dr. Cron, what would they want me to ask? Or what would they want to have changed? Do you want to guess what it was? No? They asked for Taco Tuesdays, always Taco Tuesdays and two recesses. So I thought, see, remote kids and in-school kids, they all the same, it's all about recess and tacos. So I had a ball being with them, we told some jokes, I told them some, they asked me some. So it was a great experience and I think it was heartwarming for me to see how well they really are doing remotely. Mrs. Babcock was really doing awesome with them, they knew exactly what they were doing, they had their routine and their schedule. We went over a little bit and ran into their snack time and they were talking on the chat, it's snack time, it's snack time. They knew what they were doing, so I am appreciative that I got to join that. For me, it was my first ever remote class as well. So that was all I had, I just wanted to shout out to them and thank them for having me, I had a ball. I hope to go back before the end of the year. I have a seventh grader in the middle school and they are fourth graders going up into the middle school. So they were going to get some questions together of what she could answer for them. Maybe some fears and things that they might have heading into a whole new world of a new school. So that's all I had. Does anyone have any questions or comments before we close? No, okay. Second. Okay, we'll roll call, Mr. Mills?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Biggins?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hennessy?
Yes, as well.
I'm a yes as well, okay, thank you very much, everyone, have a good night.